Okay, the April 14th, 2020, meeting of the Beverly Planning Board is called to order. As a preliminary matter, my name and this is Ellen Hutchinson. I serve as the chairperson of the Beverly Planning Board. Before beginning the meeting, I would like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. I am confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members of the Planning Board, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Sarah Bartley? Sarah, you here? We'll come back.
Yeah, you'll have to unmute yourself to do that.
Yeah, sorry, my phone wasn't unmuting very well. I am here.
Thank you. Derek Beckwith?
I'm here.
Thank you, Derek. Alexander Kraft, the vice chairperson of the Planning Board?
Present.
Thank you. Ellen Flannery?
I'm here, yes.
Allison Kilcoyne?
She won't be here.
Okay. Wayne Miller?
I am here.
Thank you, Wayne. Ellen Hutchinson, I am here. And Andrea Toulouse?
I'm here.
And just for the record, Andrea, at this stage is still a non-voting member. Staff members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Darlene Nguyen?
Here.
And is Jody Byrne with us?
Yes, I'm present.
Hi, Jody.
Hi.
Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. I believe the only person that would be would be Mr. George Zamborus.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, George. Before we get started on this, I just hope that everybody is well, your families are well, and frankly, everybody stays well. So, good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency and the Commonwealth in response to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspended the requirement of open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible, physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting may feature public comment at the chair's discretion. Right now, there are no public hearings on the agenda. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening by telephone and video conference via Google Hangouts, as posted on the city's website, identifying how the public may join. Kindly note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you are participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or telephones muted unless recognized by the chair in order to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking has finished before speaking so we can clearly hear all participants. Regarding meeting materials, supporting materials that have been provided to members of this board are available from the Planning Department. Please contact Darlene Nguyen to request supporting materials. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Meeting ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, I will cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. First, the chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will invite board members to provide any comment, question, or motions. Please remember, board members, to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. You may mute yourself or be muted by the meeting host by clicking the microphone mute/unmute icon, pressing the mute button on your telephone, or by pressing asterisk six on your telephone keypad. Please reserve the chat function for technical difficulties and not for public comment. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate minutes. For any response, please state your name and address or affiliation before speaking. Regarding public comment, after members of the Planning Board have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commenters, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. For those individuals present in person, please take care to speak loudly and clearly so the microphone associated with the webcam or telephone can effectively broadcast your comments to those participating remotely. Finally, each vote taken during -- taken, I'm sorry. Finally, each vote taken during this meeting will be conducted by a roll-call vote. Any questions for board members as to what I just read? No. Okay. First request, Darlene, do we have any subdivision approval not required plans?
No, we do not. Ellen, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just so everyone -- you're on the phone. Are you watching it by video or just on the phone?
Just on the phone.
Okay, so you can't see when anybody in the video shakes their heads? Just making sure.
That is correct.
Just clarifying that. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Our second agenda item is a request to endorse the plan and accept the performance bond for the definitive subdivision plan, 40 Ellingwood Court. The applicant is Anthony P. Baltus, trustee, Freshwater Real Estate Trust. And I believe Mr. Zamborus is present?
Yes, I am, Madam Chairman. George Zamborus.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
For the record, George Zamborus, engineer for the project, representing Mr. Baltus. The subdivision was approved by the Planning Board back in October, and just due to vacations, busy schedules, we're just getting around to get the covenant to you and the final my law for endorsement.
And that endorsement is because the appeal period by which somebody might challenge that has expired, correct?
Yes, it has. And there were no appeals.
Does any -- members of the board have any questions for Mr. Zamborus regarding either the endorsement of the plan or the acceptance of their performance bond? I actually do, but I have to pull up the document. Mr. Zamborus, on the covenant G -- oh, the Form G, I'm sorry.
Yes.
On one, I think it's paragraph four, has a place where there's supposed to be a date. Hold on, let me pull it up, but let me be a little bit more specific.
Yeah, Ellen, I was going to bring that up, if you want me to comment on that.
Please, please.
Mr. Zamborus had asked what to put in that date. We typically do the two years from the date of the subdivision approval. He had asked if the board would be willing to entertain two years from today's date because the subdivision was approved so many months ago. So that just affords the construction completion deadline of two years. The board does have the authority to continue construction completion deadlines at will. So in my opinion, I don't see any reason why the board couldn't determine which date they want to use as the starting point for two years.
Okay, so simply to reiterate, we have the authority to either select as the, let's call it, the starting date, either the date the subdivision plan was approved, or alternatively, today's date.
Correct.
And do I also understand correctly that you don't have a -- you, meaning the Planning Department, don't have a preference?
Correct. I don't -- yes, I don't have a -- I don't see a reason not to grant the request.
I would agree with that. Do the -- any member of the Planning Board have any other questions for Mr. Zamborus?
No, I don't, Ellen.
Ellen, can I mention something else for the record? This is Darlene again.
Sure.
Since we weren't sure we were going to have this meeting, and I am still a little unsure, although I'm sure we can work it out, how we will actually get the plan signed. Mr. Zamborus has -- and the applicant have provided a request for an extension of time for the endorsement of this plan. So I just think it's worth noting that they were also willing to grant that. And I think we could accept -- the board could accept that just in terms of arranging to get the actual plan signed. I think we can -- you and I can probably work it out, but just noting that.
This is Ellen again. Is there, Darlene, is there a timeframe by which the plan has to be endorsed after we basically endorse the plan?
There isn't really. It was unclear, and so therefore he provided this as kind of cover. You know, right now, the state has issued an order where providing, you know, relief from all of the deadlines that we have to meet to be 45 days beyond the expiration of the state of emergency. But we don't have to wait. We are allowed to take action. So just specifically to endorsing the plan, you know, typically you have to wait the 20 days of the appeal period. There's no -- I did not see a statutory timeline by which we have to act and endorse the plan, but it is reasonable to make sure that we do endorse the plan once approved.
Okay. Do board members have any other questions? I'm sorry?
Madam Chairman, George Zamborus, I'm just asking, and I'm not saying, you know, this is even an option. Is it possible that the board could authorize Darlene to sign the plan on their behalf, and that might solve your problem? I don't even know if that's a possibility, that can be done or not legally.
It is. The board has designated Ellen as that person, and we floated this idea before, and the board was uncomfortable designating a staff person to sign on behalf of the board. So I think it can be arranged in that, you know, if it involves me dropping the plans off outside Ellen's house, signing, coming back and picking them up at a later time, you know, I think we can figure it out. But I just noting that it won't happen tonight.
No, it won't happen tonight, no.
Like normally, yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions for Mr. Zamborus? Any other questions or comments on the Form G? Okay, then I would welcome a motion first for the endorsement of the plan. Yes?
I will move to endorse the definitive subdivision plan for 40 Ellingwood Court, Beverly, Anthony P. Baltus, trustee, for the Freshwater Real Estate Trust.
And that is a motion by Ms. Flannery, correct?
It is. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you. And could I have a second on that motion, please?
Second. By Alexander Kraft.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second by Mr. Kraft. Is there any discussion on the motion? None. Okay, so I need to find my -- here we go. This will be a roll-call vote with in alphabetical order. So Sarah Bartley, your vote, a or nay? Yes or no? Aye. Thank you. Derek Beckwith?
Aye.
Alexander Kraft?
Aye.
Ellen Flannery?
Aye.
Mr. Wayne Miller? Okay, we'll take that as an abs --
There we go, sorry. I don't -- yeah, that should be unmuted. Aye.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
It's Wayne Miller, aye.
Okay, thank you. And Ellen Hutchinson, aye. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Next agenda item is to accept the Form G covenant, and I would welcome a motion on that. Actually, strike that, strike that. First of all, do -- Darlene, do we need to move to determine the two-year date for paragraph four?
I think it would be sufficient to include it in the same motion, like you are accepting the Form G covenant with a construction completion deadline of April 13th, 2022.
Okay, that sounds good to me. Could I have a motion on that, please? Yes, Ms. Flannery?
I will move to accept the Form G covenant with the construction completion date of April 13th, 2022, for the definitive subdivision plan at 40 Ellingwood Court, Beverly, Anthony P. Baltus, trustee, Freshwater Real Estate Trust.
Thank you, Ms. Flannery. Is there a second on the motion?
Second, by Alexander Kraft.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? No discussion. We'll move to a roll-call vote again, again in alphabetical order. Sarah Bartley?
Aye.
Derek Beckwith?
Aye.
Alexander Kraft?
Aye.
Ms. Ellen Flannery?
Aye.
Wayne Miller? Ellen Hutchinson, aye. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Next agenda item is the approval of minutes, and I believe that the minutes that we have before us are the very lengthy October 1, 2019 minutes. Is that correct, Darlene?
Yes, that's correct.
That's what I'm looking at. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? If you have not had an opportunity to review the minutes, please advise. Okay, are there any changes, additions, deletions, scrivener's errors that need to be addressed within the minutes?
I did receive some scrivener's errors, name corrections and date corrections, from Ellen Flannery, including that I had changed a lot of dates to 2020, even though this was 2019. I have already jumped ahead. Correction of Derek -- spelling of Derek's name in one location. Yeah, page eight, page 12, and page 13 are all date corrections from the year. Page 12, paragraph three, correction from peer, as in a friend, to peer, as in the structure. Page 12, paragraph four, Mary Ellen C.'s last name was indecipherable, and I was unable to track it down because the person does not own the property that they live at, so I was not able to figure out what the last name was. So I think that's sufficient.
Okay.
There were -- you can see, there were some other track changes, but they were mainly like commas or capitalizations, things like that. I don't see anything else of substance unless Ms. Flannery notes anything that I missed.
Not at all, Darlene.
Ellen Flannery, did you notice anything of substance?
Not at all, Darlene. It's covered everything. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you. Any other board members have any other proposed changes or additions or deletions or edits to these minutes? Hearing nothing, then I would welcome a motion to approve these minutes as corrected for scrivener's errors.
Madam Chair, this is Alexander Kraft. I move to approve the Beverly Planning Board minutes for October 1, 2019, with the edits that were discussed and submitted to the Planning Department.
Thank you. Is there a second for Mr. Kraft's motion?
Derek Beckwith, a second.
Thank you, Derek. Okay, once again, we will do a roll-call vote on this matter. Sarah Bartley?
Aye.
Derek Beckwith?
Aye.
Alexander Kraft?
Aye.
Ellen Flannery?
Aye.
Wayne Miller?
Aye.
And Ellen Hutchinson, aye. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you, everybody. Our next agenda item is a discussion of or an update on the master plan, and I will turn this over to Darlene to lead this discussion.
Yes, thank you. I guess I just wanted to give you an update to what our anticipated schedule is. We do have a final -- well, we do have a full draft plan put together. It has been circulated to the Master Plan Committee for their review, of which we now have three members on the Planning Board. And I've received some comments. I'm going -- I still have a couple chapters to review. I'm trying to pulling everything together, and I have a follow-up call with the consultant later this week. A few comments, but nothing really substantive, so thoughtful comments. Certainly some, like typos and corrections need to be made. And then we will release a final plan for review, have it available for the general public to review. And we still need to kind of hash out the schedule. I'm thinking -- I'm thinking that since we won't be having a public meeting, obviously, during this time, the -- I'd like to have the plan before the Planning Board at our next meeting as a discussion point, and kind of opening that discussion, and then have it available for people to continue to review. You know, maybe I will have some open office hours virtually at various times throughout the week so people can contact me with questions or talk to me one-on-one if they're looking for more information on something. We were originally planning on doing that physically as part of this process, like being available on a Saturday afternoon or Saturday morning at City Hall to have people come in and check with us. So I think handling it that virtually, you know, it might even be something where there's an open line and a bunch of different people can jump on, or a couple. I don't expect a bunch. But so that's kind of the option. I do need to circle back with the mayor in terms of, you know, overall strategy. We do want to keep moving with this, and I understand in the current context, you know, we have to take that into account with everything that's going on right now. It does seem a little strange reading the plan and thinking about the condition of the economy when the plan was written and the condition of the economy when the plan has been finalized. And I think, while I still have to kind of float this by the mayor, I think what might be most appropriate is something like, we are having a letter from the mayor, and perhaps it can be, you know, it's the cover page, the second page, and perhaps it can be addressed there, or a type -- an addendum or something like that that can address, you know, how we place this plan in the context of what we're facing right now in terms of dealing with the pandemic, the economic result of, you know, all these business closures, layoffs, and the housing challenges that are not getting better but getting worse because of this. So that is an ongoing conversation. But as you said, you know, I think our preference is that since we were so close to the end, and it really makes you wish that, like, taking two less weeks to, like, make some of my edits before, but, you know, we had the plan practically written, and we frankly, you know, want to release the consultant in terms of their obligation. They have fulfilled their obligation, and we want to be able to finalize the plan. And so I think that's where we are right now, and open it up to, you know, other people's thoughts and discussions. I know a couple people have seen the draft plan who are on this call, so.
Does anyone have a kid or make a comment or have a question for Darlene regarding the master plan and the process going forward? Darlene, I do have a question. I have some concerns. I understand the desire to move this process forward, but I have some concerns about something of such significance for the city, moving forward under these type of conditions without necessarily the public having the ability to weigh in on this, what I guess what I would call, you called it a full and final draft.
Mm-hmm.
I understand that you're talking about, you know, perhaps doing something remotely, or perhaps doing something where people can come into your office. But I think that's -- both of those are markedly different than having what people understand the process to be, which is generally some variation of a public hearing or an ability to public comment. And I know right now that obviously can't be done. I don't think any of us know when it might be done, but my concern is that we are advancing this major, major plan, and I personally don't feel comfortable that the processes that are being suggested as for a way for the public to weigh in on this full and final draft really allow for the public to respond in a meaningful way.
I appreciate those comments, and I hear you. I know we had talked about doing four public meetings. I know we had talked about doing four public meetings, and our consultant was only on board for three. Aaron and I had been discussing even before this happened whether or not you really can, a public meeting like the ones that we've had are really the most useful ways to kind of vet like a final plan in its form, knowing that everyone has, sorry, my children, knowing that everyone, that there has been substantial opportunities for public comment, and I'm not saying there's ever too much or enough, and knowing that the recommendations, which are the real meat of the plan, had been vetted in that setting. We weren't even sure that a large public meeting was the best way to really air that So I hear your comment, and I think it's worthwhile, and I will bring it up in my conversation with the mayor.
I think that, this is Ellen again, I think that, this is just my opinion, that there's a marked, or a marked difference in making, or what am I, I'm trying to say, I think there's a marked difference in asking the public to participate in the drafting of this process. And I absolutely and totally tip my cap to the Planning Department, to the consultant, to the committee, because I think the public involvement in that process was nothing short of phenomenal. But I do think there's a big difference in asking people to be involved in that process and then presenting a draft to the citizens of Beverly without giving them an opportunity to weigh in especially on how this may affect certain aspects of their lives. I have, I have really significant concerns about this. So I just wanted to say that, so, and I respect your response to that, so, thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to weigh in with a question or a comment?
This is Derek. I'd like to, if that's appropriate now.
Please.
Thank you. I, I'm reminded a little bit, and this is familial, I guess. My daughter is a playwright, screenwriter, and she's written a number of different things, and when she doesn't have the opportunity to direct, you know, and it's, it's, what she has often written, taken by other directors, actually turns out not to be in the flavor, the mood, what was intended. And, and so without giving, so taking that analogy, without giving people another opportunity to say, here's what we heard, here's our report, and not having them be able to have at least a vehicle for commentary and to feel included will, in my opinion, make it a less valuable document in the future. That said, there are huge, huge struggles in trying to do something like that right now. But my thought was just doing a virtual town meeting, or city meeting, where the mayor and you and Aaron and whoever else just get up and talk, even present, you know, the new normal that we're in, and how the master plan plays into that, or will be rolled out in the future, whatever. But then having the opportunity to direct people, so people can come, they could see the presentation online, and then they would have a website or some other way that they'd be able to read the document and then provide some, you know, public comments or something along those lines. And knowing that, you know, hopefully the document is 95% there, or 98% there or something, but something where we give people an opportunity to engage so that when it moves further through the process, they feel like that they had a part of it. And so whether or not it would be, and it would be a good sign for the citizens, I think, to see the city as up and functioning and doing things that enable, you know, 200 people perhaps to be in a particular meeting or something like that online. It might take a little bit more budget than a free Google Hangout or Zoom, but there must be some, you know, method to do that. So that's what's been swimming around in my mind.
Other, thank you, Derek. Other board members who wish to either ask Darlene a question about this or make a comment on any of this?
This is Sarah. I think my concern has been, just, it's such a difficult time for people to pay attention to it. You know, I think, and especially not the same for everyone, right? I think everyone's experience of this is really different. I think about families trying to keep up with school, working full-time. I think about people who don't have access to the same level of technology. I think about people who, you know, are really, have more sort of pressing concerns in their lives, that they've lost work. I just think there's a lot going on, and it can be a hard time to kind of ask people to pay attention to the city's master plan. So I just personally have struggled with that a little bit. I concur with the desire to want to give, you know, not have it, I don't think it's good for anyone if in the long run it feels like it's been accepted sort of under the cover of what's going on. I think, you know, if it comes across as if it was sort of ushered through, you know, with other things going on, knowing people can't really have the ability to pay attention to it, I think that that doesn't come across really well. But I worry about trying to force an event, knowing that not everyone is going to be able to have that ability to participate, whether that's just the mental bandwidth to participate, or if it's the actual technological ability to participate. But I just want to throw it out there. I mean, I do share some of those concerns just about the timing of it and the desire to really be thoughtful about what this all means. I don't, I don't think we totally know what economy we're going to have when everything opens back up. And so I just kind of struggle with all of that as well, and so, you know, I would be in favor of a range of different options, but those are definitely the concerns swimming around in my head.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah.
Who's this? I'm sorry.
Oh, that was Darlene, sorry.
Oh.
I just wanted to be clear there. I mean, there's no intent of trying to, you know, throw this under the cover of some more serious situation. Certainly, I think everybody is very respectful and considerate of that. And, and when I was talking before, I didn't mean that we wouldn't, you know, have public venues. I do think, like, having, you know, at least two planning board meetings dedicated to it or with it on the agenda, and a city council meeting, at least one is the bare minimum that we would be seeing anyway. And I also think that we're not rushing. We're not thinking, we're not trying to figure out a way to rush this or get it done quickly. We're just trying to figure out a way, a strategy forward and through this, and taking into account all the considerations. And as I mentioned, I haven't, we haven't really, right now, we're trying to get just to the complete plan, final edits before, you know, final draft edits before we, and the mayor and myself really broach what the next steps are. But we're thinking about that, too. So I appreciate everybody's comments.
Thank you. Darlene, I would just follow up, this is Ellen again, with what Sarah was saying. I'll, to be honest with you, to me, it does feel a little bit like there's some pressure to get this done sooner versus later, and I guess, given the pandemic, given everything else going on, as Sarah said so eloquently, given the stresses that everybody's facing, and given the fact that we wait, we've waited this long to do another master plan, perhaps waiting until this pandemic passes, and that we have the opportunity to give all of our citizens, you know, meaningful access to expressing their opinions, if it, to me, if it means waiting, I don't know how long, three, four, five, six months, then maybe it's time spent. That's all I would say.
Comment, Wayne?
Wayne, go ahead.
I certainly agree with things that have been said, especially Sarah's concern that people haven't got the attention or access, and to some extent, the people that are strongly affected, people with housing issues are the least able to weigh in at this point. But it seems to me the pressure to get it done, a lot of that pressure has to do with the pressure to release the consultants. So I'm thinking about how we might accomplish the releasing of the consultants, but at the same time not be pressured to rush the process at all. But I understand that the consultants, they're on a contract and their time is up, kind of. I just, I don't know what the resolution for that is.
Anyone else with a question for Darlene or a comment?
But this is Derek.
Okay, anything else? I'm sorry?
I was just going to ask, I mean, if it was, if it was something that, where the consultants would, you know, take a pause on it right now? Is it waiting for payment? Is there some sort of impediment to that? Or is it something where, rather than work for the next six weeks or whatever, they hold for a few months and then they work the six weeks or whatever the time would be needed before they were released, when the timing works better for the city?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't think there's necessarily like this, like, no one's pushing and knocking on our door necessarily to say, like, we have to be paid or anything. Frankly, our consultant has already expended their budget, and they're working beyond it to finish the plan. So could we say, hey, you know, we're going to sit on this for six months, and we're going to come back and say, can you make these tweaks? There might be an arrangement for that. I think the challenge might be in the way that there's, and I'm kind of in my position torn between this a little bit, there's this response mode and moving through what's necessary to do, and the mayor primarily is doing this, you know, what do we need to do today to address the current needs of our population in our community that are caused by the pandemic and state of emergency? And then there's another school where people are trying to get things done just to keep moving forward with their own, to have work, to have things to do, to finish projects. And just the nature of the consulting industry, as somebody who used to work in there, they don't like having projects hanging over them. Now that being said, if they've already expended their budget, they can close a project out and maybe they can do us a favor in six months and make the edits. The challenge in this always frustrates me. When you want a really nice, pretty-looking plan, you have to do it in a special program. You can't do it in Word, so it's not like, and I don't have access to that program. But I'm not saying there's not a solution to that, you know, there could be a solution to that. And so it's important for me to be able to take this feedback back to my conversation with the mayor and figure out, you know, how we think we want to move through this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Darlene, before we move on, is there anything else you want to add about the master plan?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Okay, do we have any other business, Darlene?
Um, no.
Okay.
Unless, do you want to do the other business?
Do you?
No, you can.
I would be honored to do so.
Okay.
Does everybody on the board know that Aaron Claussen has accepted the position of Director of Planning for the City of Lynn? Okay, I'll take that as a, I guess, a yes.
There's a lot of heads nodding.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, Ellen.
Well, the wonderful news is that Mayor Cahill is going to, or has, put forth Darlene Wynn's name to the City Council to, for their approval as the next Director of Planning for the City of Beverly. So please join me in congratulating Darlene. She will do, she's done a fantastic job as, for us, and she will be a superb planning director for the City of Beverly. So congratulations.
Yay, congratulations. Thank you, thank you.
Wait a second. Does that mean that we're going to lose you on the planning board? Wait a second, wait, wait.
A little apprehension there, Darlene.
I mean, you know, that did cross my mind. I was like, just got in our groove. And I will add, so the City Council won't be able to act until the 27th. I guess I'm acting planning director right now, I'm not really sure. It, Derek, it depends. I will be still staffing the planning board for the time being. I don't know if we will hire anybody, at least until the new fiscal year, in July, to fill, backfill my position, although I will try to get started. And I probably will hand it off, although there's nothing to say that the planning director can't also staff the planning board. But judging from my email inbox this last week, I may willingly hand it off. So, yeah, but I, but thank you. I'm excited. I'm, you know, it was unexpected. It was strange timing, certainly, to be jumping into a new position and saying goodbye to a planning director who was just really excellent and excellent to work with. And it was kind of sad that we didn't get to actually work in the same office again for the last three weeks, when we found that out. But I do wish him well. I know he's going to do a great job in Lynn, and I look forward to doing a great job in Beverly.
You will do a great job here in Beverly.
And that you will.
No doubt about it. When is our next scheduled meeting?
May 5th.
Okay, and obviously we will do that in the same manner.
We will, yep. We don't, depending on the agenda, we don't need to have them on BevCam, and we will discuss that.
Okay.
But at least it will be a virtual meeting where people can either call or access from the internet, certainly.
Okay. Any other new business? Hearing none, I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn the meeting, Ellen.
Thank you, Ms. Flannery. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, so the motion by Ms. Flannery, a second by Mr. Kraft, Ellen, oh, I have to do a roll call, sorry. Old habits are hard to break. Sarah Bartley?
Aye.
Derek Beckwith?
Aye.
Alexander Kraft?
Aye.
Ellen Flannery?
Aye.
Wayne Miller?
Aye, and good night.
And Ellen Hutchinson, aye. That motion passes six, six zero. So thank you, everybody. Stay well, stay healthy, stay safe, and I guess we'll talk over the next month.
You, too, Ellen.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right.
Thank you for everything, Darlene.
Yes, you're welcome. All right, bye-bye.